Good evening, welcome to the August 13th special meeting, Nacogdoches City Council. Kathleen, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Dear Lord, thank you so much for all the many blessings that you have showered upon us. We ask you to please continue to bless our city and to give us wisdom. We ask all this in the name of Jesus, amen.
If you'll stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item is open forum. Just one, okay. Lisa King.
We already talked about me watching, so I'm gonna watch as well on time. I think most of you know me, my name is Lisa King, I'm with the Nacogdoches County Hospital District Board. In January 18th of 1992, the citizens of Nacogdoches County voted to replace the hospital district's ad valorem tax assessment. Since that time, the district has received 1% of the sales and use tax to pay the debt and expenses for indigent care, bond debts, operations of the hospital, and the ambulance service. The consensus at that time was to equally impose a tax recoupment that everyone buying goods in Nacogdoches County would contribute to. Relieving the property and business owners who had been forced under the ad valorem tax structure was the driving force for its adoption. The district could currently impose a tax of up to 75 cents per $100 value. A young family that's struggling to pay a $250,000 mortgage don't need an additional $1,875 added to their tax burden. Attracting new businesses to Nacogdoches with an added ad valorem tax will also make it difficult. Also, in January of 92, the elected board members of the hospital district approved a resolution which irrevocably pledged and transferred to the bond trustee all of the right, title, and interest of the gross sales tax to the payment of the principal and interest of the district's bonds. The structure of the obligations is to have the gross sales tax collected by the comptroller, deposited directly into the bond trustee to pay the PNI. That's approximately $330,000 a month. If the city seems to think that it can just take the sales tax away from the district, then our county will have to put up 8% of the general revenue tax levy in an escrow account that they can't touch to provide for indigent healthcare. This is approximately $2.1 million on the current valuation of taxes. It appears that the city also wants the sales tax at the expense of the indigent persons of our county. The result will be property and business owners being saddled with an increased tax burden. The mission of the hospital district is to provide care for all of the indigent population of our county. We do this by administering a very successful program that identifies those who are unable to pay for their healthcare. We reimburse all providers and hospitals that are using this service. But this is not to be confused with uncompensated care that all hospital ERs are mandated to provide. This board is continuing to look for a strong partner to operate Memorial Hospital. We have had several respected entities visit our facility. Unfortunately, after encouraging conversations with us, they went out and talked to people in the community that said they were not and will not support our hospital. And that lack of support has sent those people running for the hills. The bottom line is, we need your support, we need the sales tax. The sales tax is pledged to the bonds, and Nacogdoches needs two hospitals. We do not need another tax burden. Thank you. Whoop, I went over, 14 seconds.
That's okay, Lisa. Okay, next item on the agenda. Consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Regular agenda. Item 6A. Consider approval of an ordinance for the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, amending Chapter 102 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 5, Stopping, Standing, and Parking of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas, providing a sur- some clause, a continuation clause, providing a repeal clause, and providing an effective date. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jerry Baker, City Attorney. What you have before you is proposed amendment to Chapter 102, specific to Article 5, related to stop, standing, and parking in the code ordinances. If the council will recall, I think a few meetings back, we had a presentation from a concerned citizen about long-term RV parking on city streets. After that meeting, I was asked to look into, see what we could do with our ordinances, if anything, to address the issue. So I took the opportunity to look around at several cities throughout the state. I didn't write down all of them, but some of them included Bryan, Lubbock, Tyler, Abilene, San Marcos, et cetera. I really tried to focus on towns that also had a college, as we do here, so that, you know, these kind of issues related to, you know, in-laws, parents coming up, visiting their students on, for long weekends or whatever might be addressed, and see how they addressed it in their ordinances. After I looked at that, took that survey of those ordinances, I drafted a draft of a proposed addition to Chapter 102, and then sent that to Nacogdoches Police Department to get their input, as well as Rick, and after receiving their input, making some minor changes from that, you have what's before you right now. If you look at the ordinance in front of you, you'll see that this would add a Section 169 to Chapter 102. The first subparagraph, paragraph, subparagraph A basically gives you the definition of what we're talking about here when we talk about recreational vehicle. Subparagraph B is kind of the heart of the ordinance, it really governs what they can do as far as parking. And as you'll see in that subparagraph, it really limits it to parking on the street for a period of 24 hours, unless they seek prior approval from the chief police. Subparagraph C would address the other parts of our current ordinance, says it's angle parking, et cetera, to make sure that just because they have this 24-hour window doesn't give them the right to just park however they want to during that time period. And then, subparagraph D is kind of a safety net, so to speak, for lack of a better term. If, you know, the police determine that, you know, the parking of that RV, no matter how long it's parked there, would cause a hazardous condition or interfere with traffic, they can ask that it be removed, and if it's not removed, then that person could be cited at that time. So I would be happy to answer any questions you may have concerning this proposed amendment to the ordinance. Do you have any?
I have one.
Sure.
So, I think it's great. I assume that the police department thought this would be very helpful to them to remove some of these.
Yes, because as you know, we currently have no provisions in our current ordinance to address a situation like this.
So, my question is, if we pass this tonight, which I hope we will, will there be some lead time in enforcing it? Because there'll be some people who probably, you know, have never thought that this was ever gonna be a problem, and they'll be stuck with it. So I'm hoping, I guess that's a question for you, Mr. Beverland, how you might wanna do it, or is it either one of you?
Well, keep in mind, and you may blame me or thank me one way or the other, looking at it, from the in-law perspective, they can come and visit, but they can't stay forever. So hopefully, some of y'all thank me. Jerry, I was gonna ask you, did you, do you think, I mean, obviously, y'all can set a date when you want it, you, of course, we have the summer that's about to terminate, so I don't know if you wanna use some kind of hard stop-start date of, I don't know, what's the next major holiday, would fall?
Labor Day.
Oh, that's.
So, I would, I would try maybe after that weekend, like the day after that weekend?
Well, per law, it won't go into effect for at least 10 days anyway.
Okay.
And so, you're looking at the end of August, probably before it's effective anyway, after publication, so I don't see it going into effect immediately in an issue. I would hope that, you know, an NPD could address it if they're here, that they would, you know, start off with some warnings. You know, I think that would be appropriate, and allow people, you know, because this is a new ordinance, and, you know, it's not our intention to punish people, it's rather just to help prevent this issue from going forward.
And maybe a little bit more publication, maybe on the city, I don't know where to tell you to publicize it, but that we did this because there were some serious issues, and we felt like we needed to pass the ordinance, and just to give you fair warning, you're gonna have to be moving your recreational vehicles, so, in some way, this is a communication thing, I hope we'll.
We'll talk to Kevin about that, see if we can get something on the website, maybe.
Yeah, and knowing we'll get some people saying, "What? I have to move my..."
This also means Randy Quaid can't come and stay for very long.
Oh, no, gee.
Any other questions from council?
Well, you ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I move that we, where are we, that we approve the ordinance outlined in CA. Does that cover it?
Second.
Okay.
Can I say?
All in.
All in, oh, I'm sorry. All in paper?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next item. Item 7 is a work session. We'll receive a report, hold a discussion, and give staff direction regarding your 24-25 health plan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm just here to introduce Jeff Summers. He is our consultant, and he's with the Cadence Insurance Company, which is a Gallagher company, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, please.
Now you can hear me, I guess. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank y'all for having me tonight. Seems to come around pretty quickly each year on the renewal for the health insurance. I've got several slides to show you, and I'll try to move quickly. I guess the best news is, tonight, is that we've had a really good year this year in our health claims. This is actually two years in a row now, that our health claims have been very, very positive. Not as near as many large claims as you've heard me talk about in the past, which obviously brings in a lot better rates for this, not only the city, but for the overall employees of the city and their dependents. I will go through this, some of it, pretty quickly, and then I'll slow down. As you'll see, I'll go through a little background again of what the city has and what kind of plans they have currently. The city of Nacogdoches offers a dental and health insurance plan for both employees and dependents, and the employee-only-based plan for the health insurance is free of charge to all that, and it's been that way a long time. That's one thing that we talk about in our meetings that we have every quarter, is to make sure that we always have a health plan, and now a dental plan, that is free to the employees. And we've actually made some real good inroads about lowering some of the dependent cost as well, this year and last year as well. The plan is a partially self-insured plan for health insurance, and in the dental plan is a truly self-insured plan. Blue Cross Blue Shield has been the administrator for several years on both of these plans. We do go out for bids every other year or so. They've always, in the past, come back with the best overall proposals. We look at a lot of different things, from your, the actual network discounts that you get, to reinsurance rates, so many different things with the pharmacy side as well. So, again, Blue Cross Blue Shield is gonna be the carrier of choice for this year. And also, I think this is important to bring up, over the last five years plus, the rates have not gone up for any of the employees or dependents. That's very unusual in this day and time, and we've able to be, also able to keep the plan designs the same, if not enhance them a little bit as well. So I think that's real important for everyone up in the front and in the back to know. The city also offers ancillary coverages, ancillary meaning life, dental, disability, vision insurance, and things like that. The city actually pays for employee, employer-paid life insurance and long-term disability. Long-term disability was paid, was actually now paid for by the city over the last few years. That used to be a voluntary product, now it's actually one that the city actually pays for. And then there's also some voluntary products that the employees could participate in as well, vision, accident, critical illness, hospital indemnity, and things like that. This is just a quick overview of the claims experience, and we like to look at a 12-month over 12-month review, and you can see that with the last updated material we had was through May. And so you'll see that the actual trend is up just a little bit in your gross medical claims paid, and then the net medical claims paid is the same. That means there weren't any claims this year that went over our individual stop-loss amount, which is fantastic. That's now two years in a row that that's happened, and there's been many years we've had several, several claims go well over the individual stop-loss amount for Blue Cross Blue Shield. The pharmacy's up just a little bit, a lot of it is, well, a lot of it's in either the weight loss category for Ozempic and Mongero, which we think, when we talk about this, can be a really good thing for people. It does lower their weight, it helps them, if they're type 2 diabetic with their A1Cs, and a lot of different things that can, can make a person a lot healthier. The trick is to making sure, once they stop taking it, is that they have still a really good, healthy diet and things like that. And we have put in a real nice, I believe, wellness program throughout the city to maybe help with that as well. So, that is costly, but it's something I think is part of the wellness program, it just happens to hit in the pharmacy side of things. That's probably the biggest increase, was right there in that, in that particular area. There was a little bit on the specialty drug side that went up, that's just because specialty drugs today are just very, very expensive. Admin and reinsurance cost went up around 10% year-over-year, and the total cost about 8.4. So if you saw 8.4 increase, you would think that was not very good. But the idea is that we've had two really, really good years in a row. The expected cost on both these plans each year have been around 3.2 million dollars. So you can see that the expected number, overall, these numbers are a lot better than that. So even at 8.4% rate increase, things are going very, very well. We did, I was talking a little bit about the large claims. You can see this year that we've had nine large claims, that's any claim over $50,000. We've had four claims that are between 50 and 75, and then five between 75 and 100. But we haven't had anything over that, and that's two, again, two years in a row. Last year, we had six, this year, we've had nine so far, which, again, is very, very, for as many people as you have on the plan, both employees and dependents, that's a very low number. Many, many years, we've had several in that 500-plus category as well. Whoa, that looks a little funny there. This is, that's kinda hard to see. This is the fund balance history, and I don't know how that's gonna, how are we gonna make that look a little better? I'm not real sure how we're gonna do that.
We can read it.
Huh?
We can read it. Oh, you're talking.
Yeah, we've got October 1 of '23. Let me just, I'm just gonna read, I'm just gonna give you some numbers on this. In October of '21, we had $1,594,000 basically in our, in our fund balance. And in October of '23, we jumped it all the way up to $2,675,000. And then as of July 1st, we have $3.1 million, which you can't see on that slide there. But that is an incredible increase. We had back in 2016, all the way down to $400,000, as you can see there. And so we've really increased the fund balance over the years. We had a couple of rough years back, you know, seven or eight years ago, but now we've seemed, every year, been a little bit better, and that's what you want. That 3.2 million dollars that was, is the fund balance as of July 1st, is very close to the overall expected cost of the plan. So you almost have exactly the, in a fund balance, how much the cost of the plan is today, without any payroll deductions being paid, or any premiums being paid for by the city as well. So that's outstanding. If we can keep that up, that's gonna be really, really good. Next is the plan design. I'm gonna go over all this. The idea here is that we did not change the plan design this year, we did make a few changes last year to that, we've kept it the same. Remember, you have a base plan and a buy-up plan. The base plan is the one that's free to the employees, and then if anyone wants to purchase a buy-up plan, they have the opportunity to as well. So again, no changes there, propose for next year also.
Jeff, real quick question?
Yes, sir.
I know you were gonna try to see if you had time to look at, well, another city I was at, we had, we talked about, added a, and we operated heavily off of sales tax. So in those years, we were extremely high. So what we did, and granted, PD was the biggest department we had, we actually added a second carrier, so we added a gap plan, so a second underwriter. What I asked Jeff to start looking at, he may not have it yet, but would be to look at, at least, could we underwrite maybe that maximum out-of-pocket? So if you're looking at something that's maybe having a trend of less risk with high claims, could we, at a reasonable price? At our size, it probably would be hard to, obviously, I think it would be very expensive probably to do a full gap at this point. But whenever Jeff can come up with that, if that's something we could bring back, if it's reasonable, because obviously, if you could go back one slide, Jeff. When you're talking about, you look at the pay ranges across the city, and if someone has an individual, let's say they're doing the buy-up plan, and they've got a maximum out-of-pocket of $7750 on a surgery or something, or having a child, and so until they hit that, that amount, that can hit them pretty hard, especially if you look at, again, if someone's making 50, if someone's making 75, that's their household income, just do the math, I mean, 7750 is 10% if their household income's 75. So I do think we need to try to start, even if it's chipping away, at the maximum exposure that our employees have, in the most cost-effective way, and as we bring more cash, we look at other ways to sweeten that, I would say, sweeten it, to actually have them less exposed, is the nicest way to put it.
Thank you, Rick. Can we go ahead and respond to that, or Kathleen?
Go ahead, and then I'll.
I think it's a great idea. We looked at some, and we didn't have a long time to do this, because you do have to really switch up the plan designs a little bit, the way the gap plans work. They're a fully insured plan, so there is some direct cost typically to the city. If that was the case, you could pass that on, on the dependent side as well, but there would be some extra cost to the city on that too. But we will be looking at that for next year's plan as well, and also just looking at maybe lowering the out-of-pocket maximum in the current plan design. If we keep up the way we're doing right now, we should have enough money to be able to do some things like that. We just don't wanna make sure that we, we don't get too aggressive too quickly with these. We wanna do some things, we would rather, at this point, we talked about in the meetings, really trying to lower rates for people, than maybe changing some of the plan designs. Because in that, in that out-of-pocket maximum does include the deductible, does include all the medical co-pays and the pharmacy co-pays, and the co-insurance as well. So everything altogether make up the 7750 or the 8500. The ACA has a maximum on your out-of-pocket maximum of over 9, a little over $9,000. So we haven't reached that, which is good news. And so we would love to bring that down on both plans, actually, and then also look at maybe a gap plan to see if that might work as well. So we're definitely in the process of doing some of those things.
And I was gonna say, in the other area that I just know in general, having looked at this in more than one venue, and tried to reorganize some of it in every place, when you're looking at the dependent coverage and the percentage, Jeff does have some, you can see it's sliding the right direction, but we can do, we can do more, and I think we should do more, because, let's just take an example, someone endless, military, straight out, you know, that's something a lot of people can relate to. They don't stay in, they don't, they're not able to pull disability, they come out, they go into fire service, or they go into PD, and, you know, when they go from having TRICARE and very low co-pays and deductibles, and then they come into another government job as city, and that's not usually something they adjust to, to having effectively to, you know, maybe 1,000 a month, or 800 a month, whatever. What is our current full-family plan, dependents?
It costs on one plan $767, and $1,092 on the buy-up plan.
Okay. So, if you're doing the buy-up plan, and they're making 60,000, and it's 10, it's 1,000 a month to do the whole family, that's just food for thought. I know we can't do it all at one time, but start, I would suggest starting to think about that versus, you know, if you're looking at state agencies like a Tech dot, or if you're looking at some of the others, they have a whole different coverage because of their size, and I know that that's part of our, our issue. It's money, it's cost, and we've got a lot to tackle, but when the options are other state agency jobs, things like that, then that's something that could help us on retention as well.
So my question while we're on this slide is, it's actually two-part. How do our co-pays compare with, like, SFAs insurance? Do you have any idea?
I don't. On SFAs, I do on a lot of other cities compare very well. SFA has a little bit different plan, they have a Blue Essentials HMO plan, which is a little bit different than what you guys have. It is run by the state, and so they are, again, a lot of employees to work with now. I do think they'll probably be moving to the UT Health System Plan.
They already moved.
Which also is a Blue Essentials as well plan. So, it may even get better, that may even be a better plan now, since it's part of that system, but very rich because of, obviously, so many employees they have.
So I'm really concerned about those emergency room visits, at 500 bucks a pop, and also, you know, specialists, if you're, you know, somebody needs to get to a specialist.
We actually, this, this, you may not, this may be a little bit different for you, but on emergency rooms, we've actually increased that over the years. We've actually increased that from probably 200 to 300 dollars, every time you go, up to 500 dollars. Most all fully insured plans you see today are in that 500 dollar amount, mainly because it's so expensive to go to the emergency room. Remember, if you go to the emergency room, and you're admitted to the hospital, that co-pay goes away, it's waived.
Okay.
And so there's so many urgent care centers out there, that we would rather you go to an urgent care center, especially if it's a minor emergency, or just something that you're doing over the weekend, and you can't get someplace, go to an urgent care center. That's why we've made those co-pays a lot lower, just because it's a lot less expensive for the employee and their dependents, and for the city as well. So that's why we have the differential, a pretty big differential there in urgent care and the emergency room.
And I assume everybody knows to do that, so.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say the specialty, the specialty care as well on specialist, take a quick look, we did raise that, just because they're more expensive than, obviously, a primary care physician is. $65 is very commonplace when you're looking at benchmarking, so is the $45 as well, and then again, urgent care at 65 or 75 as well, very similar to a specialist at that point. We're really trying to focus people on the urgent care centers, because they, obviously, they're open a lot more often, they're almost always in-network, which is very important, where a lot of the, if you don't go to a hospital that's an emergency room, and you go to one that's a standalone, it most likely is not in the network, and they have a very bad habit of not telling you that, and then all of a sudden, you get hit with a really big bill. And so we would prefer, as you noticed that most ambulances, if there's any ambulance drivers out here, they don't take you to the standalone emergency room center, they take you to one of the hospitals, right? And so we tell people, if you can, if you can get to an urgent care center, go there first, and if they tell you you need to go to the emergency room, go there, and then get there. But that's, that's what we've had in Nacogdoches for a good long time, with the, with standalone ER next to CVS, is the difficulty there in the network side of things. I know I kinda went around a lot there.
One quick.
No, no, that was totally helpful to me.
So one other question, Jeff. I know that, I think a notice went out to members that, I know certain specialties, I know you've got College Station not too far, Baylor Scott &amp; White, has that been working? Has that been worked out or not between Blue Cross and Baylor Scott &amp; White? Because I thought they were withdrawing from the network.
They're, they're always, every October first, there's always a hospital chain or a big, big chain of facilities.
That's a pretty big, that's a pretty big one.
Yeah, it's a really big one. I've not heard that they haven't, but I can sure check on that. I haven't heard they did not work out a deal.
Okay, that they did not work it out?
I've, I've not heard they did, they did not, okay. Anything else on the plan design? I know this is something we talk about extremely, on just every meeting. This is one of the slides we talk about the most, is what kind of plan design is best for the employees. Okay, moving forward. Get to some of the numbers here. So the estimated annual funding for the 2023-24 plan year, contributions from the city and employees was three-point-two million dollars. That's on an estimated basis, based on the current numbers now. That's what it looks like it would be. The expected cost for the year was a little over three-point-one million. The maximum cost was three-point-six, and over the last twelve months, we've been at two-point-eight. So you can see a nice trend there on our actual cost versus our expected and our maximum. We always try to at least be to expected. I would love for us to be between expected and maximum, but that's very difficult, because that means raising rates. And we don't wanna do that. But we've had such good years the last two years. We've been very fortunate to be able to fund to almost right at the expected number, instead of somewhere between expected and maximum. So if you had a worst-case scenario, three-point-six million dollars would be the worst that the city would have to pay for that particular year, unless any payroll deductions obviously paid out. Then the estimated annual for the twenty-four, twenty-five plan year, this is the one that's probably the most important to you. Contributions from the city are gonna be a little bit less, because we're actually lowering the premium some. So it's gonna be three million, one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Now, that's a static number that can change based on open enrollment, people coming and going from the plan, from throughout the year and things like that. But if it was as of today, that's what the contributions from the city and the employees as well, if we approve the plans tonight. The expected costs are right at three-point-two, so the expected and the contributions are almost exactly the same. And if you had a worst-case scenario, it'd be three-point-six million. So if you did have a really bad year, you could draw down, you know, almost, what is it, five hundred thousand dollars or so, out of the fund balance. That's what we always worry about when we're on, when you're on my side of the fence, is that we have to go into that three-point-two million dollar number, five hundred thousand dollars. And if we have a year like that, then the next renewal is not gonna look very well. It's gonna be a lot higher than that number. It'd probably be, if you hit three-point-six million, then the next year's maximum would probably be in the four-point-two, four-point-three million dollar range. The next one, there's a lot of numbers here, I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. A little bit, it's pretty close. I think I can see this. Just to give you an idea on this, the employer or the city pays seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for each employee. And that has not changed, and our proposal is that for not, is not to change either. Our spouse rates for both the base plan and the buy-up plan is to be reduced twenty-five dollars per month. The children rate's fifty dollars a month, and the family rate's seventy-five dollars a month. Last year, we reduced the rates by fifty dollars for the spouse, seventy-five for the children, a hundred for the family. So over the last two years, we've, we've dropped the family rate a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And it goes to Rick's point, that we're really trying to do more and more on that. We're trying to lower the rates on the dependent side, especially as much as we possibly can. It's already zero on the base plan, we can't go any lower than that. But we're, on the, on the buy-up plan, we do want some differential there. We don't want just everyone jumping onto the buy-up plan. We do want a little bit of differential. But if we could start to lower that some too, I think we, I think we would like to do that as well. And I think we put more focus on that this year than we did making any plan design changes. We wanted to try to continue to lower the rates if we could. And I think this, this is two years in a row that we have been able to lower some rates and not increase any rates for the city. That probably hasn't happened in, over the twenty years that I've actually been working with you guys.
I'm just gonna throw something out there, kind of as a target. You know, if you could, if we could get to the point that employee plus a family was five hundred dollars, you know, that'd be infinitely better than where we're at. And if we can figure out a way to cover deductibles on the backend, or the maximum out-of-pocket in addition to that, I think over time, we need to, not just on salaries, we need to do that too. But we need to chip away at this and be as competitive as possible. Just in my experience, one city, one I just left, we got the dependent coverage up to sixty percent. Hundred percent on employees. The other one, one of the ones prior to that was after adding the gap plan. We basically reinvested in our employees with that extra sales tax that was coming in in that period. And with that, we effectively got the, got the plan to completely cover. Meaning, you could add a family, and we covered your deductible. We covered all of it. Two cards, when they would go to the hospital. Put the first one down, and on paper, it had a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. Put the second one down, and then it covered it. So I realize that's maybe Cadillac plan, but I think that that's what we shoot for. I don't think anybody shoots for a Chevette. I think we should shoot for Cadillac.
We just gotta keep those claims down. If we do that, then all those things can come for fishing. So hopefully, we can do that. I do like the idea about the gap plan and the deductible side, because that's what you hit first. Very rarely does anyone hit their out-of-pocket maximum, but that deductible is always creeping in on someone. Anytime you go to the hospital or something, it's always, they want your deductible first, right? And so like what Rick was saying, if you have a card that can do both, help you with that, then that's gonna be very advantageous to everyone. So we're working for it. So we're working towards it. Always a working process. Okay. Next is, we'll move to dental insurance. We're almost finished, I promise. We've actually, over the last few years, started paying for the employee-only dental insurance. So the employees don't pay anything for employee-only dental insurance, which obviously is, is great. These rates have not changed either, so the spouse, children, and family have stayed the same for many years. You'll see that the contributions from the city is right at a hundred-and-sixteen thousand. The proposed plan is the same. And then the estimated contributions are gonna be the same, because there's no rate increases or any changes there. So the total is a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. The fixed cost and projected claims for two thousand twenty-two, or that should be twenty-three and twenty-four, is a hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. And for next year, it's a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, okay? So it's up a little bit. The reason the proposed plan's up a little bit is because we wanna add a little bit better benefit on the orthodontic side of things, the orthodontic side of the equation. So I'll go to that next. I don't know what's happened to our slides here. There's a little difference in what I'm looking at on my page. The current, you'll see the only thing that's changed at twenty-five hundred, that's on the orthodontic lifetime maximum. That's a fifty percent benefit. So if you go, if you have a child that's going in to get their braces, and you say, I have a fifty percent benefit for my orthodontics, right now it's fifteen hundred. So that means orthodontics would be three thousand dollars. I don't think there's any orthodontic, orthodontist in town that only charges three thousand dollars for your benefit. So we wanted to raise that up. That doesn't get, it's probably closer to six, but it's at least really close to the fifty percent range now. So it's twenty-five hundred instead of fifteen hundred. So it's a five thousand dollar bill overall, instead of a three thousand dollar bill at fifty percent. So we wanted to make that change. I think all the rest of the plan design looks very, very good. But we wanted to do that. It did increase the, the projected claims a little bit, but I thought that was something that we're doing to just about all of our customers now. I hope this looks good. Okay, this is a lot to this, I know. But this is kind of the summary. Rate adjustments, you'll see for the medical insurance, to keep it a zero percent increase for the employees, to reduce the spouse and children and family coverages by twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five dollars a month. No other rate adjustments. Everything else is exactly the same, dental insurance, all the way down to the voluntary accident and critical illness. So no changes for the employees on any of those coverages as well. Just a little bit better plan on the orthodontic side of things, on the dental. And then I have some comments, I can't even read it up there, on what we would like to do. And this is some things that we're gonna need some recommendations from, from council on here. We do have a wellness program called Catapult that we've, that we've had now. This is gonna be, is this the second or third year, Benita? Is this the third year, second year that we've had that? It was well-attended last year, but it could always be better. They come on, you know, on the campus, they, you can make appointments with them. They do everything almost that a, your primary care physician can do on an overall physical. And that doesn't cost you anything to do that, just as it doesn't cost you anything to go to an in-network doctor now to get your physical. And so the district, or the city is asking that we do a fifty-dollar surcharge per month for any employee that does not complete their wellness screening. I know that HR does an audit on this about every month, on making sure that people have done that. So that's something that they would like to really reinforce. I know that we pay a lot of money for prescriptions these days for weight loss drugs. We also want people to go get their physicals, get their physicals done, whether, because it's free. It doesn't cost anything to have that done. And so if you don't, they would like to have a fifty-dollar surcharge for not, for doing that. And that's just for the employee. It's not for a spouse or, or children. It's just for the employee only. Also, this is something that would go into effect in two thousand twenty-five. Recommend a fifty-dollar surcharge for any tobacco products that are used, for both employees and spouses. We want the education to get out there for the year. And then following year, two thousand and twenty-five, like to include that surcharge. I know we talked about it even last year, and it was something that I think people were, said, let's do that. We need to do that. And then it didn't happen. We wanted to talk about it again this year. And I would say probably seventy-five to eighty percent of our customers that we have, have some sort of tobacco surcharge. But it also includes, you know, tobacco cessation programs as well, classes, things like that, to get you to stop tobacco use as well. That has to be included for this surcharge to be included. So that's something that we would like to see for two thousand twenty-five. And the other one is for spouses. And a lot of times spouses will be on your plan when they can be on their own employer health plan. Doesn't happen a lot, but we would like to keep that from happening. And most of the time, if you are an employee only somewhere else, it's gonna be cheaper than if you're gonna be on your spouse's plan, most of the time. So sometimes you wonder why this person is on the plan anyway. And the risk, the, the risk that comes with spouses on the plan is higher than employees, actually, and obviously kids. And so we always wanna do good risk management as well. And so we've got a couple of different choices here to go, go ahead and put into place this year. If you have the ability, if you're, if you have a spouse that has the ability to be on his or her employer health plan, they need to do that. This would be considered a loss of coverage here, so it would fall under a qualifying event status at their employer, so they could do that. Or you could also not do anything. And next year, you could also do a surcharge if someone wanted to stay on the plan, if they had an option to get on his or her health plan there. So there's that as well. Yes, Rick? That's a lot.
Has, has anything, and I obviously haven't had to deal with this, both my parents are passed now, but I do remember when, and other folks dealt with this, that if you had two plans overlapping you, and you had something critical occur, you'd get in a dueling thing between the, the two insurers, even if, on who had it. Kinda like, you know, no different than when you get a hurricane, and you got tue and flood to deal with. Is, does that still occurring? Is that, or is that less of an occurrence now?
Less of an occurrence, just because of the cost that's involved nowadays. The cost of spousal insurance usually is, when you add your employee only at your health plan, and then you wanna be on your spouse's, it's usually pretty costly to do that. And so you don't see it as often. But what he's talking about is coordination of coverage, or dual coverage, where yours, as an employer, pays first, and then if you're on your spouse's plan, it pays second. It pays what, like your deductibles and co-insurance and things like that, that's on this plan. And so that's, that's what he's talking about there. And that could come up, if you wanted to leave it as is, and not, and not actually force people, then they could just have a surcharge. And I think that's why we put both in there, to see kind of what made sense to city council and to HR, obviously Rick, and, and what y'all wanted to do as far as how, how we wanna do that. But I would say that almost every one of our customers and people that we work with have, have one of those too. They either don't allow, and most don't allow, don't allow it at all. Don't allow spouses to be on the plan if they have a choice to be somewhere else. Then the next thing we have here, again, no, just no increases to any of the plan, plan designs at all, so we didn't make any changes, along with rates. And we were adding the maximum orthodontics up to, from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. So any questions, I guess, for now? Any more questions? I know we've been kinda going back and forth, but it's been good.
I just have one.
It's been very good.
So you're talking about getting it to where the city pays pretty much for everything, right, eventually? But then you have surcharges on other things. Which one, would that city pay the surcharges for the health thing too? I mean, I may not be understanding.
Jeff, you could explain that those would, those would hit the.
We're talking about gap plans.
Well, I'm talking about surcharges if you had, let's just say you had some things that the city was trying to effectively cover everybody that needed coverage that was an employee, and their families, to the extent they can. If you had someone that was going to be otherwise double-covered, you'd hit them with surcharges on that, because.
Or if they just, or if they just had the option of being on.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Or if they had the option of being on his or her other health plan through their spouse, or through their own coverage, they could do that.
Didn't you have a lot of blowback, or quite a bit of blowback on the smoking charge, surcharge?
A lot of blowback on the smoking and tobacco charges last year, yes. That was probably the biggest blowback. We don't really have, the spouse deal usually is not a big deal. The, the, the physical is not, because it's free. You should go do that. And plus, you can do it here, too. That's just not doing it. So that's why there needs to be a surcharge, we think, for doing that. That's, that's part of the wellness program. You can have either a sticker or a carrot, and we kinda have both here. I mean, we can do both by doing that. Again, the biggest one is the tobacco surcharge. We have several customers that do that. We have several customers that don't. So that's, that's definitely something that I could see.
Is that a trend in healthcare for the use of stick?
Yeah, we, we see it all the time. It's an increase in premium. It's kinda like life insurance. If you go out and buy life insurance, they're gonna ask you if you smoke or if you don't. And that premium is doubled if you smoke, so.
So how did you guys keep it so level? Everything in my life goes up, has gone up, they go ask. How did you do it? Is this magic?
No, it's, it's based on your claims.
But I mean, how'd you keep the claims down? Is it luck, or is it?
A lot of it's large claims, right? We, we basically, sometimes you get lucky. You really do. Because we can't, we can't prevent someone maybe from getting cancer, having a heart attack. Now, you try, I mean, you try to do your physicals, you try to do things like that to keep people healthy, to catch things early. But there's just some things you can't. And so there's gonna be some large claims out there. One year, we had four or five really large cancer claims out there, that, one of them was in one family, I think. And so it was on the news. I mean, so it's not even a HIPAA violation. They came on the news and was talking about, you know, their, their situation. And so those are things that have really kinda calmed down. So it's allowed us to be able to do some of the things we've been able to do, more than anything.
Thank you.
I know we, during COVID, we had some, you know, serious illness. I was so glad we were able to cover it. But I would like to mention that I think that our, over the past three years, I think Ms. Hall has done a really good job in actually focusing, focusing on employee wellness. And I think that has had.
I agree.
That's had an impact in bringing down our costs, and hopefully in increasing wellness at the same time. But I think the attention to employee wellness, the information that goes out, it has an impact. It reduces our costs.
And part of that wellness program that we talk about is not only getting your physicals, but also, you know, tobacco usage. We, we know that. We, you, you have the employees, what, eight hours a day? The other sixteen hours, you don't know what they're doing, right? And then if you let them smoke on the job, or whatever, use tobacco on the job, it's just, it's one of those things. You want people to quit if they can. We know it's hard. We know it's an addictive situation, and we know it's hard. And that's why it's difficult sometimes to put surcharges on there. I really believe for certain, we need to have tobacco cessation programs and things like that. Whether you decide to charge people more or not, we need those type of programs inside the city to do that.
Do we have one right now, a tobacco cessation?
We don't have a true smoking cessation program, no. Not one that's gonna, not one that's going to cooperate with the ACA. Let's put it that way. The Affordable Care Act requires that you do certain things in order to be able to have a surcharge.
Yeah, I mean, but do we have one that is at least somewhat effective? Or, I mean, just out of curiosity, what, ACA or no ACA, or? Yeah. How many people have we been able to help quit smoking? How many people have we been able to help quit smoking? That part, I'm not sure if we can get that statistic, because a lot of that information is confidential.
Yeah, it's all HIPAA compliant on that.
I know this is going back, things were different ten years ago, before, you know, I guess maybe the first iPhone era, but that is an area where I've seen blowback. One of the first responder shops I had, everybody dipped all the time. But the biggest blowback came, we had about half of a roller derby team that worked for the city, and I'm not joking, and when that came up about smoking, let's just say the ladies were not happy. So, it, it is a cultural thing, the culture there was one or the other, and as they said, that's one of their few guilty pleasures, so I understand that we may have had some blowback, we can, I can definitely work with Benita and try to, maybe it's carrot instead of stick. Maybe there's something, Jeff, you have an idea? I don't know, but I think we should try to look at something positive. Reverse, what's the reverse from a surcharge? You get a, do, do we...
A bonus.
Do we get a bonus if you don't?
Yeah. That's happened in, with some agencies.
Regular citizens out there who talk to me a lot, they're like, and, you know, we want to get as much insurance and health for the city as possible, but they're like, "Man, you guys have got it good, and we got it bad, we got it harder." What do you think about that? You know? I mean, do, we want to take care of the employees, but does that mean that we're taking more money from just the citizens out here to do this, or is it, you know, it's a tough question?
I think your plan is, is, when, if you benchmark your plan against other cities, especially or municipalities, I think you benchmark very, very well. I'll give you an example. We are now part of Gallagher, which is the fifth, or the fourth largest insurance agency in the world. We have over fifty thousand employees that we're a part of now, and the city's health insurance is better than what I have, through fifty thousand employees. Now, still, you always want more, right? There's also, there's also salary differences, and there's also, there's a lot of different things that come into it. And so, I think you have a very, very good plan. I think we're doing the right things. Sometimes we get lucky, like you said, we've gotten lucky over the last several years and not to have to be able to raise rates, and then the city's been able to contribute more when there should have probably been an increase, and they didn't. And so, it's, I'm a little bit more hesitant when we're talking in our committee meetings about just throwing it all out there and giving more, 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 because it may come back to bite us, I've, I've seen it bite, bite us before, and so I do worry about that. But I think we have a really good plan, I really do. And I don't see things going down, like you haven't either. I mean, you see your car insurance and everything else going up, 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 and not many times can I go either in a forum like this, or just sitting in a conference room talking to employers, where I get to tell them, for this many years in a row, we get to keep it the same, or it go down a little bit. It's always on a trickle-up. And a lot of employers want to just give an increase to give an increase every year, just to make sure they're, you know, they're getting a little back, because there is going to be that time when it's going to hit us. And so, instead of just giving them nothing, and all of a sudden giving a big increase, they want to give increases a little bit at a time. So, there's a lot, lot going on out there. We have a lot of different industries also, even in our town, and of course, even in surrounding areas. And a lot of times, it depends on industry, and what, what kind of employees, what kind of claims history there is. Like I said, we have been very lucky the last few years to have such a good claims history. But we could also turn where there's not quite as good as, as well. So, we want to keep a really firm, fun balance, I think that's really, really important, and just be astute with what we're doing, and try to make the best decisions we can, and also thinking about all the employees and their dependents out there as well, at the same time. We also have to think about the taxpayers as well, and making sure that, you know, we're not just throwing a whole bunch of, of things out there that's not important.
And, and I'm going to play El Diablo for a second on this. One thing I have seen, if you get into a competitive situation, let's say your first responder shops and those around you were grabbing people, you're training them, they When you do have good, when you do have good, have good insurance and good dependent benefits, you can sometimes create a situation where people really can't afford to go, if they really look at the math, even if the salary is not quite as high. So, just food for thought, especially if you're looking for people to stay in that community and stay with you over the long haul. Because when someone's straight out of, you know, when you have new recruits coming straight out, just like, or straight out of college, and they come to work, they're not looking at that, because that's paid. But once they put down roots, and they've got a family, sometimes that will be the reason they stay, or it might be the reason that they go to another entity that has better benefits for their family. And I've seen that public and private, where people will walk with their feet, so just back of, back of the head, just think about that, too. It does cost us more to retrain people, and to go out and recruit, and the next people you hire are going to cost you more than the last ones you had.
The point I'm trying to make is that there's a delicate balance between getting incredible coverage here, as opposed to take, we're going to have to raise taxes, everybody's always raising everything. So, that's what I'm trying to point out, is how much are we taking from the citizens in order to make our life better? Not mine, but...
Well, the good news this year, I mean, in last several years, is that...
Really popular with city employees, but I'm just asking.
Right, right. I, I would think, over the last several years, the employee, the, the rate that the city is putting in has not changed, so it hasn't gone up, which is very nice as well. Because there's that part of it, too. There's that seven hundred and twenty-five dollars that the, that the city pays every single month for all the employees.
That's good to hear, because I just think people, all these people that came today feel this, this pain right there, you know? And we want to inflict as little pain as possible right now, because we're already being hit by everything else.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, I've, I've lived here for twenty-seven years, I, I know a lot of people that are in the back here and in the front, and, and I see it, too, I get asked all the time, "What's happening with my health insurance? What's going to happen with my health insurance?" And it's a big deal out there, it's as much as going to the grocery store sometimes, or worse.
Well, thank you for doing that, appreciate it.
You don't need a motion or anything, right?
I think, I think you do need a motion, I think that the, one of the things...
No motion, we just need some guidance with regard to the surcharge, the surcharges and the eligibility of the spouses. I mean, as we tweak that, is that something that you're interested in? We're just wanting to hear your, your thoughts and your guidance as we make these decisions.
But don't, do you think we need two motions? One, to go ahead and do the health insurance and the...
We can't really do a motion.
Oh, how are we going to start open enrollment? Do we, can we just go ahead and start?
You and I can discuss, yes.
Okay.
You're not on the agenda for a motion.
Oh, I'm not on the agenda for a motion, okay, I'm just here to talk.
We're having a discussion.
Okay, all right.
I, I would think that a lot of that is going to be dependent upon the budget, right? So, I said, I would think that a lot of that is going to be dependent upon our next topic.
Correct.
The budget.
Correct.
I don't know how we can give guidance until we find out where we are on our money.
Agreed.
So...
I just have a problem with punishing employees with the stick rather than the carrot. That, you know, it just goes against kind of Texas values.
Oh, I, I agree. That's why, that's why, you know, in the comments section, you, you look at that, and we, we've talked about it a lot, right? We really have, and, you know, it's, it's something that we see out there. We want to bring it up, but we want to have good conversations about it, too, not just in our committee meetings, but in, in meetings with, with, and I would even, I would even say that get directors involved, and we have some open meetings like that, where we have everyone, where there's a lot more people within the city that's talking about that, too, and not just a few of us.
And you know, because you're from here, live here a long time, people like to be asked, and they'll give you almost anything, but to be told, they usually rebel.
Oh.
It's a proud tradition here in Nacogdoches.
I would agree with that.
Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Can we, can we take a short recess and come back and discuss the budget?
Yes. Okay, if y'all have a seat, we'll get started. Next item on the agenda is hold a discussion regarding the city of Nacogdoches Physical Year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget. And I'll turn this over to our finance director, Todd Semino.
All right, good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. And for those in the audience, my name is Todd Semino, I'm the interim finance director. And tonight, we'll be going over our second workshop. The first one was held on July ninth, we went over everything in pretty much fine detail, so tonight, I'm just going to kind of go over the highlights of things that have changed since we've last met, and we'll bring about some, some new points for conversation tonight. So again, these are the city manager's priorities and challenges that we presented to you on July ninth, they've remained unchanged. Tonight, I think the conversation from a budget standpoint will probably focus on recruit and retaining employees with competitive pay and benefits. You've already heard about the benefits. And then also, we want to make sure we're fiscally responsible with the spending of our cash reserves while maintaining prudent planning for our long-term capital projects. So we'll talk about those in these slides also. Okay, the first fund we're going to go over is your main operating fund for the city, it's the general fund. Like I said, we went over this in detail last time we met, I just want to point out a few changes since we had last met, so, and I know these slides are busy, so I'm going to have a little pointer that I'll point to what I'm talking about on the main screen here, if the audience wants to follow instead of looking at the TV. But the sales, I'm sorry, the property tax, that increased since the last time we met, because we do have a property tax rate we're proposing tonight, so we'll talk about that as we go forward, but that was an increase of about ninety thousand dollars since we talked, since July ninth. Sales tax, I'm sure the council's seen the report that we sent out earlier this week, that also increased. So we, we've increased our budget for next year by fifty thousand. And then, a, a large increase for the revenue was the transfers from the utility fund and sanitation fund. The reason why, and that increased by about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars since we last met. Part of this transfer from the utility fund and the sanitation fund is based on expenditures of the general fund, so you'll see on the next couple of slides that the expenditures did increase, so that's directly correlated, so, to help cover those expenses.
Okay, Todd, I got one question there. Okay, on, on the sales tax, it makes up twenty-eight percent of our total revenue, right?
Right.
Okay, and if we had that other one cent that goes to the hospital district, that would make up more on sales tax than it would on our property taxes, right?
If you had the other cent on sales tax, you'd basically be doubling that number right there.
Right, okay.
Because we already receive one percent, so...
And we only get the one percent.
Right, correct.
And I appreciate that point that you made.
That's a, that's a huge, if you go back to that, I just want you to circle that, that sales tax, that's the majority of where our revenue should be coming from. And I'll just go ahead and get the elephant out in the room right now. Okay, all right. I was here in nineteen ninety-two when that election was done, and there was reasons for that. And all the reasons that that was done has been long gone. That hospital district has lacked any sort of fiduciary or fiscal responsibility, and don't roll your eyes, Lisa, I'll let you talk, at me, okay? And you want to go out into the community, and you want to know why they don't want to come to your hospital? There you go. Anyway, we'll have more conversation on this, okay? Go ahead. It's taken money out of every single people, every single employee's pockets that are in this room and work for the city of Nacogdoches. It's what it does. And it's become a burden, it's unsustainable, and it won't work any longer. You got yourself into this mess, you know, and we'll have to get out of it, but you got yourself into this mess, okay? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure. Before I advance to the next couple of slides, the property tax, the eleven point two million, that's based off of a ninety percent, ninety-seven percent collection rate. I need to point out that in the past, the city's always collected ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of the property taxes that are levied. For the current, current year that we're in right now, we're looking at maybe a ninety-four percent collection rate. So, this number, I'm thinking I'm going to reduce this number on the proposed budget that I submit to council next week, because I think ninety-seven percent as a collection rate is too high, and I'll explain one in a couple of slides.
Can I say one other thing about that, please, too? Here, here is the delinquent tax report that is over two years old, and fifty percent of the taxes that have not been collected are from Nacogdoches Memorial Hospital, or someone that they have sold property to, that they are now leasing a huge amount of money from, or a line star, that will probably never get our money. So, that's where about, probably three hundred thousand dollars of that money is. That's another subsidy that the city has to take for the hospital district.
Todd, do you think it's closer to what you said in July, the eleven, one fifty-six? Is that what you're going to think?
No, I think it's going to be lower than that.
Lower than that, okay.
So, if I...
I mean, eleven million.
If I drop it down to a ninety-five percent collection rate, that would decrease the revenue you see up here by, by three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
So, since property tax is the number one source of revenue, it accounts for thirty-six percent of your revenue, we'll have a discussion on that on this slide. So, here you can see, this is basically your certified rolls from the year that we're in now. And then, here's the estimated roll that we're trying to base our budget on for next year. You can see it's got an asterisk here, because the roll's not certified. The law says we're supposed to get a certified roll by July twenty-fifth. Well, the appraisal district cannot certify the roll unless at least ninety-five percent of the values are confirmed. We have about twenty percent of our value still at the appraisal review board, sorry, my hand's shaking. So, we don't have a certified roll, we probably won't have a certified roll till November or December, but we have to do the best estimate we can on the numbers we have. But you can see, the good news is, is that between the years, your, basically, your taxable values have increased four percent, going from two point three billion to two point four billion. These numbers here are the amount of value on your tax rolls, or appraisal rolls, rather, that are frozen. So, these numbers are about eleven percent of your total value, so you're stuck with that. You can't do anything with eleven percent of your values. So then we get to the adjusted taxable value, this is where you can generate your revenue. So just going through some, so, the current tax rate is basically forty-seven cents per hundred dollars of value. We're suggesting the tax rate be increased to fifty-two point eight cents. So that's five point four three two cents of an increase. So just to give a homeowner an idea of the impact it would have on them, currently for a hundred thousand dollar house, just to make the math easy, they're paying four hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents to the city of Nacogdoches for our taxes. At that rate, that same hundred thousand dollar house is going to be five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents a year, so it's a fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents per year increase. So it's a $54.32 per year increase. I'm not, I'm sure a lot of people are asking why the large increase. So I'm gonna skip the M and O rate. That's the, that's the part of the rate that goes into your general fund to basically fund operations like police, fire, general operations of the city. This INS, that's your debt service. So every, anytime you issue bonds, that rate has to go up. So the voters approved, was it like a $43 million bond, but we only issued 15 million of it? So that accounts for 4.62 cents of that 5.432 cent increase. So the majority of your increase in property taxes is because of that bond that was issued, and it was issued with voter approval. So really, the only thing council's being asked to do is to increase because that rate is dictated by state law. So council has control of this rate here, which obviously affects your overall rate. We're asking for basically eight tenths of a penny increase. Again, these are your contested values last year. That was about 12% of your total values. These are your contested values this year. That's about 20% of your total values. So we have uncertainty or restrictions on the 11% there and 20% there. So over 30% of your roll, we're just doing the best guess that we can because none of this is certified yet. On the good news, you had $6.9 million of new property added last year. You have $15.5 million of new property added to the rolls this year. And just to recap, last year, your no new revenue rate was 47.4 cents. That's the rate you adopted. When your voter approval rate was 50.6 cents, you can't go above that rate without voters approving it. This year, comparing your no new revenue, no new revenue rate drop, again, as your values increase, your no new revenue rate always decreases. And then your voter approval rate, the rate that you can't surpass without voter approval, went from 50.6 to 52.8 cents, which is the rate we're recommending. Especially if we're gonna go from a 98 to 99% collection rate to possibly down to 94% collection rate like this year because of all of the uncertainty that lies right here. Are there any questions before I move to the next slide?
I do have a question about the, the no new revenue voter approval rates. So how, what is our statutory limit on the increase on? Is it on the overall rate or is it on the maintenance and operation rate?
So it's, it's focused on the maintenance and operation rate. And basically, basically what you're allowed to do is take your no new revenue rate, which in theory would generate the same amount of tax revenue this year as it did last year on the same property. It excludes the new property. And then you can add three and a half percent to it.
What about the, the banked rates? Can we?
Yes. So there's, so what, so what you're referring to is what's called an incremental rate. So like last year, well, the year we're in now, you adopted the no new revenue rate. When you could have went up to 50.6 cents, you only went to 47.4 cents. So there was some unused rate, and it's not just the difference between those two because there's all kinds of adjustments that go into it. But basically, you had 1.8 cents of unused increment that you didn't use last year that rolled forward into this year. And that's why this rate is higher than last year's, even though the appraised values went up, is because this includes all of your unused increment rate, which currently, you can bank three years of it. One year you didn't get any unused increment rate. Last year, you got 1.8 cents, and I think another year you got close to four tenths of a penny. So this includes 2.1 cents of unused increment rate. And if you don't, and if you don't use it, you lose it.
So that is our absolute max.
That's your absolute, that's your absolute max.
Todd, one other question. If, and I've asked you this before, okay? If you go back and you put that one cent that goes to the hospital district that I know that we have to pay for, as far as the bonds are concerned, and subsidize the hospital district. But if we put that one penny back in the general fund, what would our tax rate go to?
Well, I knew you would ask, so I already computed it. So. So that one penny would reduce your tax rate by 36 or 37 cents.
That's a huge impact, isn't it?
It is.
So basically, it, it just boggles my mind that we're in a trap that we're basically not only having to take care of the city, but we're also having to take care of a hospital district. And it's hard to do that and pay people what they need to be paid to feed their families. There's nobody in this, pardon me, I thought somebody said, there's nobody that I know of. I think there may be one other town in this entire state that designates one cent to a hospital district. That's it. It's just us. Just like we, SFA, it was SFA and another school in the state of Texas that were independent until last September, University of Texas took them over, you know, which was a blessing, you know? So I, I just want people to understand how big of an impact that this has on the city and what we can and can't do. I've lived here all my life, and I've heard people say, well, this town can't grow because there are certain families in this town that don't want it to grow. Well, that's not true. We can't grow because of this. This is why we can't grow. This is why we can't do things that we ought to be able to do as a city. Not only plan our employees, but being able to invest in our own city. I'm done.
Before you move, I have a question about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, the, the INS rate, that's because of the bonds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, so the bond actually goes into our no new revenue. That's included as part of our no new.
No, it's excluded. It's calculated separately.
Okay, so really, when we're talking about the, I'm not sure I understand why we're, why we have an increase, a 0.8 in, 8% increase in the M and O rate, and then we're calculating, I, I'm a little lost in that. Just if you would go through that again for me.
Sure, so.
Because it seems like if we increased to three and a half percent, if we had the ability to increase three and a half percent.
Cents.
I mean, three and a half cents. I'm sorry.
It is three and a half percent, right?
Yes.
Three and a half percent.
Yeah, before, before you have a tab or roll back.
Do you have the tax rate calculation worksheet?
I, I do.
Yeah, that's from last, I have it last month. Oh, yeah. Right. I didn't bring it.
So I don't know if y'all still have a copy of it. That was emailed to you. But it, I can reference you to page five of the worksheet, though, whenever you.
No, I, I believe you. I just was trying to, you know.
Please, go ahead. I've got it.
Okay, so, so if you go to page five of the worksheet, you can look at line 41. And that's where it's asking you, you know, if you're not a special district, which we're not. So you, you can, other taxing entity, you multiply line 40C by 1.035. And so 40C is obviously right above line 41. And then, which is 43, 43.52 cents. And so you multiply that by 1.035, and they got 45.04, 043 cents, which that is your no new revenue rate. And then from there, they calculate on page six of the worksheet, your INS rate. And that's found on line 48, which is 5.723 cents. And so you add those two together, and then you add the 2.11 cents on page eight on line 60, 67. If you add those three numbers together, that's how you get your voter approval rate. Like I said, in, in theory, it sounds easy when you explain it, well, it's just 1.035% times your, you know, your no new revenue rate. It, there's 10 pages of calculations. And so, but the math does compute. I've, I've followed it through the worksheet. It, it computes properly. It's just, it's not easily understood on a simple chart like this. So again, unless we hear anything different tonight, not to jump ahead of myself, but next week, when we meet, you're gonna be asked to have a record vote on a proposed tax rate. And we're gonna, we're going to propose that rate right there. And then we're gonna advertise it in the newspaper, have our public hearings. And when it comes time to adopt a rate, you can adopt a rate of anything up to that number and below. You can't obviously adopt anything above that number once we publish the notice in the newspaper.
And if we did, it would have to go to a, a vote?
If you did, you'd have to go to a vote. And in order to do that, you would have had to approve your budget a couple of weeks ago to get it on the November ballot. So you can't, that's not even an option at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, general fund expenditures. The only thing I want to talk about on this slide is that all the expenditures changed since we last met July 9th. And it's because we've incorporated the tiered salary increase that we talked about last time on July 9th. And we can talk about that again later in the slideshow. So we incorporated the raises for the employees that we talked about. We updated property insurance costs from TML, and we updated the employee insurance that was talked about today. So, so that number, when we last talked, was 30, 30 million and 42,000. So that was the increase for those three items that we put in. Again, we're gonna talk about this later. 59% of your operation, operating budget in the general fund is public safety related, so we'll talk about that later also. This is a summary of the general fund. Your charter says you have to have more operating revenue than operating expenditures, or at least equal. We're exceeding, our revenue's exceeding expenditures by 714,000. But remember, that's at a 97% collection rate for property taxes. I honestly think I need to go back and amend that and lower that collection rate to 94, 95%. So that number might drop 250 to 350,000. So keep that number in mind for the slides later because we have more costs to consider. And again, this number right here, our ending cash above our reserve requirement, which is 25% of operating expenditures, that's what we use to fund future CIP projects. And that number's been diminishing every year, so we need to keep an eye on that. This is just recapping debt service. This is why the property tax rate increased substantially is because this year, we were only paying $226,000 of debt a year. Next year, it's gonna be 1.2 million because of that bond issue. I think we talked about that enough, so. So we're gonna talk about one of the priorities and challenges, which is, you know, recruit and retain employees through competitive pay and benefits. So again, just reminding the council that employees at the city have only built in a 2% raise into their salary since October of '21. That was one time. That's one time compared to inflation.
And, and one thing we, again, one of the overarching things we did with the tiered, you'll see that when we go back to it. The inverted tier, those that made less, obviously, it hit them harder. We tried to do 3%, like peg right to where the CPI impacts were for this last year, as close as we could for both shops. We do need to talk through this, obviously, a little bit more. Did you want to go ahead and just run through this, and I'll wait till you get to something else?
Yeah, so I, I'd said, you know, our operating expenditures in the general fund increased by like 700,000 because of the raises we put in there in insurance. Well, that, that's the amount of raises that we put in driven by this plan that the manager just spoke of. Those who make less got a bigger raise.
And, and let me speak to that last bullet. We did include, and we sent out an additional slide, we did get some feedback from some of those that weren't recommended for raises, not including the directors. Keeping the directors out of it. I don't know if your chart shows that.
Yes.
Just in terms of, can you, do you have that slide? Is it right after that one? So, so, um, not everybody, but we got, we did get some feedback where folks said, now, let me, let me point to, and these are ones that we did for different reasons, whether it was during the year, whether it was retention, let, let me point to dispatch. I remember we, we were bleeding. I think we were down three or four at a functional level. I think it equated to approximately 15% raise that came under my signature, all the, all these did. Where we, if we didn't have one, we'd have none. Or a few, let's say assistant fire chief, that was after promotion, someone, no. Mike was moved into the chief position, and then Michael Self moved up to the, to the next one. That was, that was due to promotion. But if we look at the others, let's take dispatch. You know, if you don't have any, you got a real problem. We did a significant bump. That being said, we did lose a few more even after the bump. I think two of them were immediately, like maybe a week after it was in effect. But again, if you were to go back and add these in, or if you did a different amount, if you brought it down to a, you know, because you've had a raise of 1%, 2%, just showing it, because I know I, I did get some anecdotal stuff through the grapevine, which is to be expected. And we'll talk more about the other shops. You know, if you leave one shop behind, then the next year, they're gonna come at you, you know? And if you start doing this leapfrog thing, we have not been in a perfect position because of historic revenues. And at the end of the day, we ain't gonna probably all get there at once. We'll see some of the other comparables, the comps. But at some point, if you hit a true equilibrium where you're actually at market, and you're not bleeding people above what should be a reasonable level of attrition, and people want to stay, and you've got any morale issues and anything else worked out, then from that point, you hit that equilibrium. You try to bring everyone forward in a fairly even way. Now, your competitors sometimes will respond, especially in areas that are competitive. I've seen this during COVID. I can just use engineers. During COVID and the hill country, I mean, you almost needed to drive to College Station with a tactical team and bring one back because you needed a civil engineer yesterday. Your problem was, the cost of living up there was so high that you could, if you, say you were looking for a civil engineer with 10 years' experience, you could make them an offer that was 20 or 30,000 above what market should have been. They would accept the job offer and then start looking at houses. Well, when the Austin metro area was the most expen, increasing the fastest, it usually took them a couple of weeks to then rescind the offer. Because if you were coming from Houston or Dallas and you already had a house, you already had good interest rate, and you were staring down moving to a smaller house, more expensive, that twenty thousand dollars extra, thirty thousand dollars extra was gone. And that's even if we had competitive health insurance and things like that. So it is a, it is a competitive market. I, I, one thing I just want to drive home, part of this is always being nimble enough and then having the resources and still being fair to the taxpayers. Because at the end of the day, you really want to get them the best quality service. And if you do bleed too many people, you'll end up paying for it anyway because the next folks you'll hire. So part of that retention thing that we do need to address.
Also, I just want to point out, if any of the employees are looking, this cost is not just a raise, it also includes the city's cost for benefits, which would be T M R S and payroll taxes.
Now, those, those, is that cost reflected in this budget?
It is not.
It is not, okay, thank you.
This would be a, ones that we didn't initially recommend. Keep in mind, we've had a moving target on Avalor. It's been, it's all over the place. So, and we still don't have it nailed down. Wish we could control that piece. But we're going to try and control what we can. But when we looked at quote unquote, leaving those folks behind, that was based on the fact there's others that were left behind before that much longer. And we're trying to put the oxygen mask on them too.
Okay, so that's not in the budget. Other items that are not in the budget to consider is on this slide. Now, remember, I had said earlier, we had a surplus of seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars on a ninety-seven percent collection rate. I think it'd probably be safe, we just assume we got a four hundred thousand dollar surplus to consider any of the items on this slide. I know the city manager's going to talk about public safety increases on the slides going forward, which he'll take over the rest of the presentation after this slide. But keep in mind, for each one percent increase for police, so that's the entire police department, each one percent would cost an extra fifty-one thousand. If you consider a one percent increase or increments of, one percent for the fire department would be thirty-eight thousand, six sixty. And like I said, I think, I think the city manager's going to take it from here.
Oh, you're, you're giving me some of the trigger, that's probably dangerous. What do I point it at? Okay, yeah. That's what, okay, oh wow, a laser, wow. Probably a bad idea. So, sorry, Houston, more Houston jokes. Okay, so this is looking at our retention rates across various divisions. As you can see, you know, you're, you're going to get that, obviously. You're going to get turnover, you're going to get retirements, you're going to get separations. I would like to point out though, that, and I know we've, we've talked about, we've got a, we've had retirements, we've got to recruit in P D. We have definitely, we've had less turnover in, let me see. You're asking me to look at, where's fire at on there? Well, I don't think we had any turnover. I don't think we had any turnover. But I, I did want to point out, let me see if I can Dr. Evil and use the laser as they would say, hold on here. So I realize, when you get into small shops, oh shoot. Those are the reason I went to Cougar High. Let's see, now I figure how this works. When you've got small shops, if you lose, you know, it don't take losing many, and you're at pretty, what appears to be cata, catastrophic levels. Now, P D, you can see, we've had, we've had some, some retirements, we've had some separations. But if you look at also, let's take parks. Now, obviously, we have stabilized finance, but this was a work in progress the whole year from the, really started the day before I got here, I think. Okay, let's, dispatch as well. And then, and rec, and you've had some in recreation, but I think I'm missing, well. So if you look at some of the labor pool, and am I missing sanitation? Let's see. It's missing, okay. So we have some, we obviously have some areas we need to continue to fill. Some of them have been addressed. I know we had I T. Close, I think Dennis has somebody that's now heading off to the military next. So that's going to be probably where it is. Obviously, the library, parks, now, these are, these are labor. So I, I'm going to point out the obvious. But if, if you're, if you could go down, if you go over to Pilgrims and cut chickens and make more money, or you go down to Chick-fil-A and sell chickens and make more money, that, it, it, it used to be, back in the day, you could always find labor. That is not the case, it's only exacerbated post-COVID. So if folks will walk, walk and look for other jobs, and, and those are critical jobs.
Can I, can we go back to that slide? I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, turnover is one factor, but there's another variable that has concerned me over the past three years, and that's vacant positions. Can you go, can you go through each one of those? Airport, are there any vacancies right now?
Oh, you're, you're asking me?
Yeah, but she knows everything.
I think it's a bonita, it's a.
She's, she's not.
But approximately.
I don't have it initially, but they're, they're full at the, at the airport.
And county enforcement, we pretty.
Um, there, it's three positions, they're at like two and a half.
Okay. The fleet, four positions, what have we got?
Fleet is, I think, I think fleet's full.
Okay.
We're at a hundred percent.
Historic sites is full, probably?
Yes, what I was showing, what I was asked to show you is the difference. So if there was a, a.
Turnover.
A si, pretty significant kind of number. I didn't show every division because, and so historic sites was rectified, their backend. Fleet was rectified, has since been rectified.
So, so my big concern, I think we have a number of positions that have not been filled. You won't see turnover if you haven't filled the positions.
Correct.
So how many vacancies do we have right now in the police?
Um, you've, you've got that on the right hand, on the right column, I believe.
Thirteen.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you've had.
No, that's not.
Hold on a minute here.
Separation, yeah.
So vacancies, so you need to, I guess it's.
So I think I, I mean, this was something that.
When you talk about how many are in the academy versus how many are in the F T O.
How many vacancies do we have? And then in addition, how many positions are not actually engaged, fully engaged in policing right now? Or we're missing, how much is it?
I heard twenty-two, including the people in the academy.
Okay, so we're twenty-two down?
Well, law police here, don't y'all have the answers?
They've always been down, Kathleen. They've never been full staffed.
Well, in the past three.
We're sho, we're showing fourteen plus the frozen, three, so seventeen.
So, so seventeen, so.
Police officers, not dispatchers, not.
Right, right, not dispatchers, not the.
Not, not civilians, not dispatchers.
Oh, there you go, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for answering all my questions.
So I know two of y'all have come to the P D. and watched, looked at the board. But I think right now, we are twenty actual down, including the seven that we have somewhere along the way in training. So, and if we could go back to dispatch, to the other slide, you don't have to move it back. But the two that left in dispatch after the fifteen percent raise were part timers because they didn't get it. I just wanted to clarify that. That's the two that left. Because you can't pay a part timer if they're not going to be full time.
Right, right.
So. And the county pays half of that salary.
Yeah.
That was an easy fix, which we talked about in one of the council meetings. So, yeah. We are significantly down, and we're replacing with brand new. And that's a year each time we do that. So we're years out right now.
So that, that, and the reason I was asking it was because I asked this question three years ago. And then we actually were able to patch that with some things. And then it's my understanding, be, you know, it's harder to bring them on board because there's so much competition for, and so many different kinds of work that a police officer.
Well, I will say, I will say this, you've got non- peers that we'll get into that can also, they can also go to, meaning state agencies.
Right, right.
In some cases, yeah, you've got, you've got really non- peers. You also have, and I had this same issue in another place. If you have a lot of tenured officers, and this goes for anybody, I mean, we talked about it for any position. If you've got a lot of folks that are twenty-five to thirty years, they can pull their T M R S. And they can go to, they can even go to work at another city a month later. So they could take their benefits, they could go get another job with, or they could take their, their pension, go get another job, and then restart another one, and then have pay benefits. And then when you throw state agencies and other things like that in, one thing I'll say, if you look at COVID, and if you look at that timeframe, there was an acceleration of some people, I think, that were thinking, oh, I'm going to do, you know, thirty-three years. And they're like, nah, I'm going to do twenty-five years. So you started getting the matriculation out. And, you know, you, you really do kind of have to grow your own in a way because if you're competing against civil service shops, larger entities, then laterals, you only get so many laterals, and Scott can also speak to that. It's kind of tough to get laterals because if you've got someone that's got twenty years' experience, they typically don't come into your system as a one-for-one. They might come in and get five years' credit or ten, but they're basically either giving up rank or giving up pay, or sometimes there'll be disciplinary issues, and you'll have a whole other host of problems.
I just wanted, when we're looking at turnover, to, to clarify that that is one variable, but probably a more significant variable in this is opens, positions, how many positions were down. So I wanted to get that. And I don't think any of the other departments have a third of their.
And, and, and the one thing I'll add though.
Critical positions.
The one thing I'll add, you typically, once you have those tenured ones leave, you're not replacing them usually with one-for-one, more tenured ones coming in. Because they'll usually take a position somewhere else where it's at least as much pay or less risk, or even less pay, and then pull their T M R S. So in some ways, if they have an alternative, and we'll, we'll look at some of this, and you get, you have a cohort of folks that are in the same tenure range, it's, I won't even say it's that different than, even though it's, you've got to grow them all over again, it's not that different than when, between right before I arrived and right after I arrived, where you had a bunch of folks, directors, that all retired, that were all planning retirement about the same time. So it is a challenge, and on the P D. side, I think it's gotten, I think Scott can speak to this, I know, I know he can, what it used to be like, how big your application and academy classes were twenty years ago versus now.
Oh, right, I mean, when we, when we applied, when we, when I applied at the P D., we had maybe three positions, and you could walk out there and there'd be fifty people in line. Not that way anymore. And not to get into, to the weeds about it, but when we take applications, just got updated today by Al, when we take applications, you get twenty to forty people that do soft calls, hey, I want to come to work. We narrowed it down to the last batch, we cut it in half, we got zero out of it. This one, we're hoping to get maybe two, if they make it through. So that's what we're dealing with. But I appreciate you, Rick, explaining that for us.
Go ahead.
So we know what's wrong, lots of explanations, how do we fix it? What do you need that we can do logically?
We need to be competitive here in the county alone. I, I know you can look at N I S D. and S F A. and this and that, and that, that figure is about the same as ours. That's not what they're offering. They want experience, just like you said. So if they want experience, they got to pay for it. Well, I've already talked to the, the chief at N I S D. I know there's some salaries out there, I know the numbers. One of them, he offered one of my guys sixty-eight to come over there. I can't compete with that, not at fifty-four or fifty-five. So we got to do something to A. stop the bleeding, that'd be retention, and to B. try to get some, some laterals like Rick was talking about. So to do that, we got to raise our, we got to raise that number, put it somewhere. So somewhere in the sixties, at least, start there.
One of the questions that I have, and the mayor brought this up, we've, we've been, we've had a number of vacancies for, this is my third budget cycle.
Right.
And we've heard this is a problem, this is a problem. And we tried to fix it with the, the step plan, and that helps some.
It started coming up.
It started coming up. When was the last time we were fully staffed, or what you would consider to be fully staffed? Because that's a question that we've had.
So I had to do the research for Councilman Bellisler, back, what, three or four years ago? And the research was twenty eighteen, we were fully staffed for about fifteen minutes. And so we rock along, and there's things that happened throughout that period, and we get down, we're not as, we weren't as down as we are now. And so we start building our, building our staff back up. And you saw that, you saw we got to getting a little bit closer. Well, two things happened, and both of them was the last legislature. They decided that they needed school police. Well, that just devastated us, and, and other cities, municipal, municipalities everywhere. And again, we've had this discussion, but I'm going to reiterate. They wiped out, they wanted experience because the governor gave them a deadline to get their people in, in place. And so that deadline is soon approaching, within days for, for the school year. And so they had to get experienced people to fill their positions. Well, here in Nakadoches, they needed thirteen, that's just N I S D. And the other schools had to onboard some. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, the governor decided to supplement the, the rural counties, the sheriff's departments, the jailers, the deputies. And so they added monies to their salaries and brought them up to the municipalities. Well, they don't have the call load that we have. So that's, that's the difference. Smaller call load, same amount of money. And so that, that hurt us too, we lost people there too. And then, like Rick was talking about, these state agencies. O I G., Office of Inspector General, they wanted to, they've increased their staff, their investigators by, I think, fifteen recently, or wanted to. And so they reached out and they got a few of ours. And we still have a few that are in line for this last batch that are looking at it. But we can't compete with them, they're, they're anywhere from eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year. We know we can't do that, but that's what these people are looking at, these officers. So there's a very slim market, or a very slim pool of employees and staff to choose from, but a huge market, they, they can call their ball. That's why we're where we're at now.
And, and one thing I'll add is, when you're next to others in a major metro, you can, if you've got a competitive budget, you can play back and forth, the seesaw thing, except once you get into civil service and unionized shops, where there's really, they really typically don't reward people from coming over unless they have big gaps too. Now, I can give one example, again, the Hill Country one. In their case, it wasn't a hospital district, but it was a member of a transit of, of Capital Metro. So one penny, half the, half of their sales tax went to Capital Metro. They were the only city that size in the whole region, you know, a city of over eighty thousand. And they were competing with the likes of Round Rock and Georgetown and all those others that did not. They were not members of Capital Metro, they had, they were much older cities, they had a larger commercial base. they had a larger commercial base. Round Rock, by comparison, had over a hundred million more in annual sales tax take than the city I'm referring to. And we did their biggest step plan in their history with individual, individuals in both shops, in some cases, twenty thousand dollar raises, depending on pay, on time of service and, and rank. And, truthfully, what happened, all those others, the next, next thing they did, they just ra, they just upped the ante. It barely moved, it moved a little bit. But it was a significant bump, because we tried to peg one year for one, for one time behind one of the, the key competitors. And one difference is, we have here is, we don't have like a JV League city sitting next to us that's training people up. Folks are taken from us, and they're taking advantage of the fact that, that our tenured officers are able to pull their TMRS. So, and, I mean, that, even the ones, and I, you mind if I run to the comps and kind of just run through that?
Let me say one thing, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Do you understand how important that one cent is?
I do.
That's, and, and I know everybody's tired of me talking about it, especially Lisa, you know, but it is, it's unsustainable, you know?
And I'm gonna add, if it were just going to indigent healthcare, I mean, I voted for it back in nineteen ninety-two, but it's, it's, it's not, it's, there's so much waste, and that is what kills me. So, that's my two cents.
Well, the, the only thing I'll say, and I'll use it as that other example, is you take one city that's a suburb, Austin area, that has a different tax base and can't tap all of their sales tax. And that was another example of being strategically on, on economic development and pay and retention, you're always chasing your peers. There was no way to keep up. I mean, the difference was literally, instead of collecting twen- twenty, twenty-two million a year in sales tax, they were collecting ten or eleven. Round Rock was collecting a hundred and ten, because they had Dell, a hundred and ten million a year. And those are who you're competing with. So, if we flip over to this market, and, and what we've, we've tried to do, and I realize, Benita's shop has pulled these, they would probably not reflect anything that's new, proposed. These are, would be the current fiscal year, not heading into the next. But, and this, and this, this is kind of, I wanna be fair on this too. And I'm sure I'm the perfect human pinata in this example, so just bear with me, because you've got things that are, that are deleted out. Yes, we've lost some to the SO, less, yes, we've lost some to SFA. On paper, they make less, but if you've got twenty-five years in, or twenty years in, you can go take that, you can pull your TMRS early, you probably, I mean, it's, it's one thing to be on a golf cart, it's one thing to be talking to college kids, it's another thing to be going out on a task force and cha-chasing suspects in the middle of the night. Then I also, we also included, just for comparison's sake, if you look, and these are, and, and this is a big pool, this isn't just what I would call your peers. But if you look at, uh, let's take Conroe. Look at their budget, look at the size of the city, um, and then look at us, and you say, okay, is that a competitor? It's two hours away. It may be, maybe not, but you, you could theoretically, if they're running low, you know, they do an incentive, especially on a younger officer that's already trained. It may not be as much for someone that's a tenured sergeant that's got twenty years in. They may actually, their life may get more complicated. It may make more sense for them to wait a one or two more years and go to SFA. I'm just saying, from their perspective. But those could be potential competitors for the labor if they're willing to go live in the big city, meaning if you're anywhere near Houston, you're in the big city, trust me, I know.
Rick, if I could.
Go ahead.
Benita, was that NSO, was that with the supplement provided?
No, and neither is ours.
We don't get it.
We weren't giving a five, five, uh, five thousand dollars, we're not doing that at all.
That's, we're a municipality, that's for rural counties.
No, no, not what the governor does, but what we offer. Sorry.
We can hear you. Oh, I'm sorry. What, we have a sign, don't we have a sign-on thing?
Uh, we do.
These are, these, this is just base, just base. Uh, we got it from them, and we just asked them, they sent us just the base. They didn't ask, they didn't send any kind of incentives, any kind of laterals, anything that they offered. They, they just sent us just the base.
I, I don't know that we need to, I mean, we all know SFA is.
I'm just wanting the, the numbers to be right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't think we have to worry about if it's accurate or not, because it's.
But, but it's, it's.
SFA is almost difficult, hard to.
Well, I, I think.
It's just the base.
I think the main thing is, we have a, we've, we've got, even the ones that you'd say, okay, their tax pay a hundred twenty-two million, a hundred thousand people, um, you know, how do you deal with that? Well, you know, if people have to vote with their feet, they're also gonna have some other costs in there. Plus, believe me, this is, you know, ask a high school football coach or city manager. Moving around isn't all it's cracked up to be, that's part of my recruiting speech. Except moving here. So, let's look at, uh, this is just cities, this is taking out the others. Now, if, if you look at that and you include what I would not consider really your near peers, but theoretical competitors that are not state agencies, yes, negative ten point eight, fourteen, fifteen, you know, upside down, making less. And actually, in this case, the higher grade you go, the worse it is. But, again, the context, you're talking about picking up, moving to Conroe, moving to Longview. I would also point out that a few of those cities are struggling this year to do any raises. I believe Longview's one of them.
Yeah.
So, then, and I'm gonna do this for FIRE too. And again, I'm, I'm trying to play devil's advocate on both sides of kind of what we're up against, not trying to pick winners, losers, none of that, trying to dial in as close as we can to say, what should our peers be, and then how much money do we have? So, when you start looking at comparable population, now, if you look at Huntsville, I can tell you from playing salmon rugby, I'm not sure how much of that population is, is school versus prison, but I can tell you their team was probably both. You've got forty-seven thousand people, and their general fund is closer to ours. But I believe the census does include that population. Am I correct on that? Can somebody, do, does the census or not? Okay, sorry. That, okay, I thought it did. So, uh, not that I've been there, that wasn't how I was counted. So, if, if you do look, though, if you, so Huntsville's kind of a tough one, because they're in a, they're in a tough spot too. But if you look at Lufkin, and then you say, okay, they're the closest, they're the ones you know the most, we're in the range, however, they do have a bigger budget, and that, that is one thing to consider. I mean, it's, it's roughly, uh, twenty-five percent higher. But if you look at from near peers, and I wanna.
Sales tax.
I didn't say penny. And now, when we, we proposed the, the three percent, I first want to admit, we didn't do the full, because obviously, we're trying to find, okay, do we, where are we on the tax rate, where are we on a bunch of, bunch of issues, including nailing down the CAD? So, yes, three percent, that was looking really at your cost, your CPI, your cost of living. That's what we were saying, okay, that affects everybody. Now, let me, let me walk through FIRE too. FIRE, don't get mad at me either. Okay. So, here's the interesting thing, when you take the big picture, especially if you get into drivers, and some of the others, and you get into battalion chiefs, I mean, it looks like you move to a big city, you're, you're really gonna make it. I mean, you're twenty percent off. Now, again, this is where, don't get mad at me, because I know that we're, everybody in this room is fighting the same thing with inflation. That's why I took the approach I did. Now, when you look at it on our quote-unquote peers, near peers, it looks like they're ahead. Now, granted, we are not having the turnover, folks have to, would have to pick up and move. But what I'm trying to say is simply, if you look at their, the bigger peer group, FIRE is more upside down on paper, and this is what's tough with this. They also don't have some of the other competitors, though. So, unless you're, I mean, unless I were to throw in, like, working at some of the chemical plants, you know, there, there are some others, you can speak to that as well. And me coming from Smokestack area, and so can, Todd, sorry, that's probably affected me. And so, and so, if I go back and you look at the large peer group, you can find twenties for PD and for FIRE, is what I'm saying. And let me see, um, let me go back. So, at the end of the day, we have retention, pay, we've got competition. We did do, I think, a, a, a pretty good job to try to address the fact that you had historic lack of raises. That being said, um, and, and the other thing, it's a possibility, and, that we have talked about, but I would not necessarily recommend going all the way to the edge of not having, you know, on paper, several hundred thousand dollar surplus on paper, and budgeting down to zero. But, you know, we, we, other cities have done it, I wanna call it a bonus, but a retention incentive on top of the three percent that's proposed. Or, we can go back, and this is something we could discuss more. For each percent that you would increase, this is what it would cost. So, if you're looking at PD, and you're looking at, uh, you're looking at sweetening the pot, there's more than one way to do it, you've got pay, and then you've got, you could do also one time. And, and where I'm saying on the one-time piece, we could do it out of the end of this fiscal year, would also be, that'd be my approach, is probably take it from budget surplus as we, before we true up, heading into the next one, but Todd will probably tell me that's a bad idea. Told you.
So, that, that, so every one percent increase for the police and the FIRE, okay, so is that already, so that would be, we already have budgeted in three percent, right?
We already budgeted in a three percent, so with each one percent increase more. So, it costs you basically fifty to add another to PD. You know, you're in the, when you look at your FTEs, let's see if I can find that one. Did I, am I going the wrong way? Number of FTEs. So, you know, obviously, if you did any additional, in addition to one time, on top of that, you know, just mul, you'd have to multiply it by that sixty-five, come up with that, or a hybrid even. I mean, could you do another one percent and a couple thousand dollar retention bonus on top of, you know, so a four plus a something else? I'm just spitballing it at this point, because we don't have, unless we dig into other areas, we don't have millions to play with.
Can I give you a simple person's or simple man's perspective? This is what I hear from people.
Is this the Leonard Skinner version of simple man?
Yes, it is. So, you're saying fifty per, fifty thousand dollars for one percent raise for police, right?
One percent more.
Right, one percent more. So, if you gave them a five percent more, that's the equivalent of a bathroom in a city park once a year. That's the way people perceive it. It's like you can spend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on a bathroom in a park, which is great, but not necessarily the most needed thing compared to five percent raise for police officers. That's the way people come to me and say, what do you think, Fred? You can answer that, I mean, police. And I know it's apples and oranges.
Exactly. You're talking basically two of the most essential people that you got to call on here, your FIRE and your police.
And a bathroom.
And a bathroom, exactly. And that bathroom, that you keep harping on, that park hadn't been worked on in about fifty-six years.
Mill Pond.
Mill Pond. I cleaned it, that pond, at fourteen years old. And I'll fight to get that bathroom, but I'm also gonna fight for the FIRE and the police. Ask any one of these officers to step up here and tell you what he thinks when he had to go out on a call. He wants to come home to his family. You already at home. But if something happened at your house, you're gonna want him there. So, he's gotta leave his comfort to come take care of you. Okay?
I think we're on the same side.
Now, same thing with FIRE, I both, I worked on both of them. When that ring, when that bell go off, we don't have a choice. We either get there, or you don't survive. But you wanna take, and take money from your area, my area, and talk about what, about what a bathroom does? Give the people the bathroom, there's families that go down there and do that. You wouldn't want your wife using a porta potty. I don't want mine using one either, okay? So, if you're gonna put apples to apples and oranges to oranges, the two-hundred thousand that you're talking about for that bathroom should have been done years ago, while you sat here and neglected this part. You never did nothing for it. I got pictures to show you didn't do nothing for it. So, now it's time to do something for it, and you got an issue. So, the issue is, take care of the people that take care of you. That's my speech to you. I've sat here and watched, li-listened to this back and forth, back and forth. We cry Mill River about the hospital. Shut down the hospital, and go to one hospital and see where we are. Let's make this thing where everybody can work across the board.
So, do you want the people to vote on this tax increase, that we need to pay for all this?
I have no problem with it. It sounds like the tax increase is an issue due to the fact that we're gonna have to pay for this either way. You gonna pay for it in the front, or you gonna pay for it in the rear? It's, it's, it's a loaded tax vote. You are not gonna be approved on certain things, and I'm not gonna be approved on certain things. But with that being said, let's be fair, you wanna cut the fat in areas that's not even your area. Cut the fat in your area, then come to mine and talk about, talk to me, okay? Because the chief has sat here and told you all what the, the prices. You asked him a question, you said, what is it gonna take? And he told you. But with that being said, not one time have you wanted to say, well, we'll get there.
Take it from Festival Park then.
Yeah. Huh? Festival Park, you gonna tear it down?
I mean, we're sort of getting off course here, but the bottom line is, we want to pay for all of this somehow. It's just a matter of priorities and what the city wants and needs.
Exactly, and I'm with you.
Can I offer a point of clarification? So, on the topic of whether you increase FIRE and police a percent or two, or whatever you decide to do versus a bathroom, remember, there's two pots of money. The, the FIRE and police issue is from the general fund. The, um, the restrooms that you're talking about were funded by the bond that were issued. That's what the voters said to do.
Right.
So, you have to spend that two-point-two million dollars on park improvements. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be the Mill Pond or wherever, as, as for y'all to decide, but it is two pots of different money.
I understand that. What I was doing is trying to make a point of where our priorities are, and the voters approve that other issue, maybe they'll approve this one. But we need our police and our FIRE department.
I think we're all sort of coming around the same idea. We're past the seventy-eighth day on the election, right? So, we're, we don't have an option on going above the voter approval tax rate, period. So, one of.
And one point of clarification on that is, when we didn't know where the CAD is, we wouldn't even know what rate to approve. So, that, that has been a, I, I do wanna just point out that Todd has been invaluable with his experience from Beaumont and working with the county, because we wouldn't have gotten this far without Todd here.
I think he's still, and it's still a moving target, right? So, and I think he's making the, the best educated guess that he can based on what we've got from Central Appraisal District. And, you know, to clarify one thing, Blaine, I'm not saying shut that hospital down at all. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, just be fiscally responsible for what you're doing with the money. That's it, that's all I'm saying. I'm saying just be fiscally responsible for what you're doing with the money. That's it. That's all I'm saying. We do need two hospitals. So.
So there are a couple of points that I want to make around that realm that we're locked into where we are right now. Okay, that's, that's not a discussion for us to decide upon. One of my concerns, and we've been doing that, I've been here three years and we haven't. Things have gotten more complicated. There are a lot of variables we're dealing with. But one of the variables that has stayed the same is that we have not increased pay for police beyond the step raises that we did two years ago. And I sat in this room and I said, we've gotta do something. Time is, time is now. We, some peo, some guys may not have another year in them. And I looked down this list. Of our police employees. And this is for the council and staff. Sure, at the beginning of their careers, they're three percent off. But if I look at a police officer. That's been in the department for nineteen years compared to our nearest municipality. They're about sixty-five hundred off from Lufkin. But tha, that's not, let me finish. Sixty-five hundred off, which amounts to about five hundred dollars a month. When I look at the percent difference from where we are compared to Lufkin beyond just the, the minimums. We're four, five, six, seven, nine, and ten. And that is down the list. The, the names of the employees are here. The amounts are here, the comparisons to our, again, the general fund revenue in Lufkin is forty-three million dollars. Our general fund revenue is twenty-nine eight. And across the board raise, I don't know is the best idea. After researching it more myself and looking at the numbers. I think that if we have to replace the officers that have fifteen, twenty years, we're going to pay more. Going to pay more to put somebody through the academy and get them when we could pay them four or five thousand dollars more. And they'll stay around for five more years. And we haven't made that commitment to our police. In a long time. And so I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think across the board is, is it.
The average officer here is working double.
Without a doubt.
He's going two jobs to one. To feed his family. It's not right. That's all I got to say.
I agree totally, and I just want to add a little bit more. I really appreciate the data collection. That's really, really helpful. And the one that's, that I look at the most is the near peer cities. And from this data collection, it looks like, um, that. That for the police, we're at least one to ten percent below in every single cat, and many of the categories, depends on the categories. But in the, the fire department, we're actually one to seventeen percent above. Now, we have not had turnover since I've been here and we have always had a number of people ready to, all, all, ready and anxious to become firemen. So I would personally like to see them as separate discussions. Because, just because we are down twenty and we're not down any in fire. So I think we have to really, and I do think whatever approach we take, it cannot be just today and it can't be just in this particular budget. Because, I mean, I don't, i- it's, it's very hard to figure out, um, what to cut, where to cut it. But I do know this. I know, I know when we hired you, Mr. Beverlin, you care very deeply about the, I'm not, have a question yet, but. I know you, you care very, very deeply about both the fire and police and you really do care about, um, the, the police. I know we have a, you know, great police officers and, um, I know we have competition. I think one of the things we may have to do long term is go back to the governor. I mean, he caused this problem. And I'm ready to take a whole band of people and say, look, you gave all this across the board to all these rural counties, but not to the municipal police in the rural. And I think that's got a shot. But I also think we need to make serious corrections in this budget.
Well, even the annexation, even the annexation, uh, changes over the last decade have boxed everybody in. You've got more competitors. I will say this, in the period between COVID. The George Floyd era, all of that. And then the political dichotomy that's occurred kind of just across the country. Where, I mean, even, you look at other campuses, other parts of the state, other parts of the country. The number of folks, especially, I think you see this, the military is having the same problem. Folks are not as hardened as they once were. Coming straight out of school. And it is very hard to recruit. I say hardened, I don't mean that in a, in a bad way. But this is not the era of, you know, my grandparents of straight from the depression to Pearl Harbor hits, they go straight in. And even, you know, they were military police and one came back and was fire academy as soon as he came back. That is not the era we're in. And that, we're kind of in that soft times make soft people, uh, era. And you've got high tech stuff out there now that, that's, at least it was options. There's other job options. There was remote work over the last few years. And. I'll just say, I know we need to do more. But it may not be an automatic silver bullet. It's going to take a little while. And it's gonna also be probably a cultural, over time, we're gonna have to work. Not that you necessarily have to adapt to the younger culture, but to a degree you do. And the, the other thing I will say that I've seen change from, you know, when I first went to work, even just on, obviously on the civilian side. But also working on emergency management related things too over that time. You know, when, it's a lot different than when your supervisors, even on the civilian side, were Vietnam era vets, officers that deployed. Versus now, I mean, computer science majors and things like that, which, which are applicable when you're running drones. When you're doing data, when you're looking for suspects and you're, and you're, you're crisscrossing on social media. But I do think it is a multi-pronged approach where we've got to make it. We've got to make it inviting, we've got to make it competitive. And we've got to work together kind of outside the box, because once you lose these twenty-five and thirty-year tenured folks. You don't just replace them with the same cohort. It's a different cohort and I think we need to recognize that. I've even seen that, uh, although, although maybe the Aggies are probably the least, uh, different, the most different ones in that they, they still just civil engineering school. In many ways that, that's different. I've, it's almost been a continuous flow of gr, good civil engineers. All this time, the last twenty years, but I have seen it in almost every other group.
So, so let me ask you this.
It's changed.
What if we, just to jumpstart this, what if we had? I don't even know what it would take, but a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of this budget that is dedicated to. And you, I, I trust you, you're the city manager and the police working together. If you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you put it into helping the police this year out of this budget. And that, I mean, because I think part of it is, I think you already said that, we need to make a commitment, we need to do something, we need to push it out there. You said the same thing. And it, I don't know if that's the right number, I'm just throwing something out here. And just put it into the police retention, police support and whether it, you know, whether it's. And I agree, I think what you said about percentages, I don't think that works right now. I mean, particularly because they need something now.
And, and maybe that's, maybe it is a, as you said, a multifaceted approach. If we have surplus in our budget for fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four. Let's do a budget amendment and do some of that work today.
That, that is what I'm suggesting and have been pondering, because I needed that. I certainly am happy about that, that sales tax number that Todd had mentioned. That was the second highest in five plus years? Basically since COVID, we had the second highest sales tax month. It was higher than Christmas.
And, and I, and I, I want to say, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to take up all the discussion, but, um, one thing you had said before and I can't find, what is your word? Once you get the formula right. The equilibrium. Once you get the equilibrium, but we, we don't have our equilibrium right now. We really are.
I, I need a casino or something.
Okay, that's, but I actually thought one of the things we could do to raise money is charge maybe ten dollars per poor joke, you know, the, sorry.
I would be paying to work here if it was based on the jokes I tell.
But back up, here's, here's what I'm suggesting. Do something really big right now. Have a, a plan that's collaborative. I think we, whatever we do has got to be collaborative. We've got to put a shot in the arm, do it right now. Do a, a plan over the next couple of years that's collaborative. Um, and that we also need to look beyond just where we are right now and do something legislative and. And what, what it is, I don't have the answer. I think you all could work out how to, what to do and how to do.
Mike's about to pass out.
If I may, just to address a little bit of the, the fire information. Uh, and first and foremost, I, I would like to make it very clear, we support our brothers in blue. We have, we are a city that is extraordinarily fortunate to have always been blessed with a phenomenal working relationship. We support them, we support initiatives to keep those guys here, first and foremost. Um, just a few facts for consideration. As you referenced, we historically have not had very much turnover and that is, that's correct and it's fortunate. However, we consider our position today healthy but guarded. Um, I say that because we have fifteen people today that are eligible for retirement. So the next three to eight years are going to see massive turnover, um, in, within our department. So how does that clue into here? The fire service across the nation is experiencing similar phenomenon to PD. It's not as critical yet, but it is impactful. We can use recruiting classes, uh, like Chief Williams spoke about, spoke about. When I started, it was a fistfight to get a job and now we are begging to get a handful of people. The Nacogdoches Fire Department has also changed its recruiting policies. We traditionally hired fully certified people that came in the door, went through our probation, ready to go. We've lowered that standard, so to speak, to allow non-certified people to apply. Which slows down the process. Today, um, there, oh, there's been an explosion of growth, population growth in Texas and also the number of ESDs, Emergency Services District, has increased. And so the number of departments that are seeking employees has raised and that pool has been shrinking. Uh, I think there's some societal factors similar to police, maybe not as, as critical, but that influence that. Less desire to do those service type jobs. As of today, there's fifty-one departments in Texas with jobs, um, being advertised. That's anywhere from we're hiring one firefighter to we're hiring an entire academy platoon of dozens of firefighters. It's critical that as we look towards the future, our salaries also remain competitive because those next few years are going, are going to be so critical for us. Through retirement simply alone, we will be losing a, effectively, probably a shift of our, of our department. And so if we don't keep those salaries competitive. Those new folks are looking statewide, they're not just looking at Nacogdoches. And if, if our numbers are up to twenty percent low as well, then we're not gonna be full. We're, we're gonna find ourselves in a very similar situation to PD.
And Mike, can I add one thing? And y'all have to forgive me because I want to take care of everybody, you know that. That's part of my weakness, or one of them.
Watch out for jokes.
And humor. But one thing is with fire is because of the way the shift schedule is, I have known folks that actually have. It's crazy to sound, have lived down in the valley or Corpus and worked up in Houston. On their shift. I've known ones that have worked on the other side of the Austin area, let's say back more, uh, that northwest side. And live down in Flatonia. So when you start looking at that, there is some flexibility. I know the ESD, the ESD thing is a whole different issue. That, that is, that didn't, that wasn't a thing, that didn't exist and that is a. I mean, you can't talk about cities that actually overlap those, you can't unwind those either. That's another one that's, that can bite you, so. I, I don't want to leave fire behind. I do want to do, try to do something to continue. We gotta do something with PD. If y'all give us a target like that, we'll be happy to go back and see. I can meet with, uh, staff and the association if that helps. And, um, I know we are pending to meet. And we can try to come up with something that fits everybody's desires and, and the budget all at the same time. I do think it is critical that we grow the economic base. So your, your one issue and I, Todd kind of hit on it. If we can do some one time, I know people don't want to hear that, but if we can add to their salary and do some one time. Or even commit to if we have another delta later, some additional one time. And keep that flowing in addition to continuous salary increases. The, the conundrum we're in is that if you look at us compared to our peers and the size of their cities, we don't have a four B. We are, and this goes back to the legislature, basically built out in our footprint, we can't go annex, uh, you know, around us. That's another challenge. We can't just go grab more ad valorem. The legislature's taking that away. We have new competitors to deal with on the, on the, uh, law enforcement side. In terms of, uh, going after our talent pool, basically training them and have them depart. It is gonna be a multi-pronged approach every year.
So, so and maybe a hundred and fifty is too low, maybe two hundred thousand, I don't know. If you could have a couple of, of things out of this budget. That we can bleed it out of wherever and do whatever it needs to take to, to.
Can I say something, please?
Oh, sorry.
Whenever you get.
I'm done.
You know, we're, we're a home rule form of city government. And w- we hired a city manager. And we have a finance department and. You can't do this. You can't do this. I can't do this. None of us on this council can do this. Because we're not in the weeds every single day like they are. So we're gonna have to depend on our city manager and our fire department and, and different department heads to come together. You know what we got? This is it. And we have to run an entire city. Sure, we have to protect and serve and like Blaine said, it's the most important thing that we'll do, you know? But we also have other things that we have to do to make this whole circle complete, you know? So. I know I beat the one cent sales tax to death. And, but I don't want a hospital to go away. I've been to their budget meetings. There's two pieces of paper. See? There's, there's nothing broke down on anything that they have. They can't make decisions on the data. They don't have the data. All I'm asking for is fiscal responsibility and we hadn't had it for years. That's it.
And hard words are spoken, but this is a workshop. So I'm trying to tell you what the people have told me, the statements they've made. So I'm not against you at all, but I want you to know what the public says.
And I'm telling you what the people have told me. So, uh, with, with that being said, um. We got a city to run. That's the first thing. That's the first and foremost thing. And keeping that in mind, going back to the city manager and to Todd and to the department heads. We all are in this together.
We are.
If one falls, we all fall. So when you start eliminating. We can't do that. The one percent, I understand where, where you're going with that, but on the same token, is that the cure all to our situation? It's not.
It'd make a big difference, Blaine, when you look at that pot shot.
I, 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 with all respect, Mayor, I understand that. But on the same token, there's other areas that's gonna have to be addressed.
Absolutely.
For us to get where we need to get.
And it can be done on the private sector.
And we can be done, exactly. So with that being said, I, I'm just asking that we all can sit down as grown men and women and get this thing taken. and get this thing taken care of.
I, I have, excuse me for interrupting, I have been to hospital district board meetings and have several times asked that not only the district come together, you've been there, Rick, the city come together, and the county come together to figure out a solution to this problem. I have gotten nobody, nobody, no response whatsoever ever from the hospital district. That's been offered several times, and Lisa, you know it.
So, ju-, just to explain where I'm coming from, it is our job as the council to help say what our priorities are for the budget. It is not our job to tell you all how to figure it out. But what I'm saying is, my priority in this budget is I think we, this, this year and the next few years, you know, figure out a plan, give a, a shot, a, a financial shot to, um, helping the police who are twenty-two positions down right now, in, until we get to some kind of equilibrium. And, and I'm hoping you all, because you're all good people, can figure out a plan to start working on that. And I'm happy to go do anything, I mean, if you want me to go sit in the governor's office and drag fifty people with me and I'll cry or bake cookies or whatever I need to do, I mean, I'm very happy to do that.
If I just go up there and tell jokes, he's likely to change all of it.
Oh, right, there we go. But that would be my priority, is I think, figure out some shot like that.
Anybody got any more questions?
I think the councils are all in agreement on the direction we should go.
That's correct.
So, we will, so, quality of life stays in there?
Absolutely.
It's not guns or butter, it's guns and butter, so...
And no jokes.
And so, we will butter up the guns and we'll be back.
Oh, I'm scared. Oh, sorry.
I think I'm actually hungry, I was thinking about biscuits when you said that.
The tax rate, and the tax rate.
So, again, just letting, you know, reminding council what's next. So, next week, we're gonna bring to you the proposed budget, including the tax rate, for you to take your record vote on. And then, um, we'll have our budget hearing on September tenth. And it's up to the council if they wanna adopt the budget that day or wait till September seventeenth. So, in line with this, so we wanna bring to you next week, hopefully, the budget that you'll end up passing. So, with that in mind, does the council wish to look at the CIP plan tonight? Or do y'all have any questions about that, are y'all good with it? Because I can pull that up and...
My, my only question is, make it public so people understand what's going on.
Okay.
That's...
I will, I will bring up one thing, though, you know, we're in the middle of a, um, study, a rate study for water, sewer, and sanitation. And part of our priorities is, you know, making sure that we're fiscally responsible on planning for the future and our capital improvement plan. And I had told y'all in the beginning that, you know, I gave you the summary of the general fund and our excess cash is a little over five million. So, the next, the next five years of the CIP plan is gonna take up that entire five million. After that, you're out of excess cash. So, that's something that we need to be thinking of also. Now, on the water and sewer side, that capital plan, this is where the rate study comes in. We gave them the five-year capital plan, we told them how much cash we have for capital for the five years. And so, their, their job is to recommend rate increases that support our capital plan that's in the budget. And they're telling me, um, as of this morning, just got an email from them this morning, that they're looking at a five to six percent rate increase for water and sewer. So, that's something that we're gonna end up talking about eventually. And then also, keep in mind that a rate increase obviously increases the revenues. If the revenues increase, that automatically increases the transfer to the general fund. So, it's more revenue to the general fund also. So, I just wanted to put that information out there.
Do, do we need to tackle the CIP rate in this?
Yeah, if you're good with it, we're good with it. I just wanted to make sure, because I know there's been some discussion about the capital improvement plan and we haven't talked about it in, in depth, but if y'all have seen it, if you're good with it, it's up to you.
There are just some categories I think ought to be open for, you know, even coming into the next year. 'Cause as you start going into them, um, I think there are a lot of different discussions to be made. So, I mean, as long as we're all flexible, I mean, I'm...
And it's like the budget, it's, it's, you can amend it at any time, so...
Okay, I'd like to thank, uh, Todd and, and the staff for doing an exceptional job on the budget. I mean, I haven't been here that long, but, uh, this is much better than the one last year. I mean, uh, we've got data that y'all can make decisions on. And it's not fake news, it's, that, that is what it is. So, anyway, anybody have any other questions, I'll adjourn the meeting? Okay? Uh, yeah. Just a minute, let's see, now we're going into executive session. And, uh, and, uh...
Forgot.
Pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, uh, it's eight-ten. All right, okay. Okay, pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, uh, no action taken. This meeting is adjourned and God bless the great city of Nakadochas, Texas, at eight-thirty-four.